Randy, I take it we're not recording yet?
We are streaming, Mike, yes.
Oh, okay.
We are streaming. I haven't got the recording going yet.
So I'll now call the April 7th work session of the Lane Community College Board of Education meeting to order. In recognition of Governor Kate Brown's Stay Home Save Lives Executive Order, this meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to remind board members and staff to keep themselves muted and to use the raised hand feature when you would like to speak. Please do not use the chat. That is reserved for tech communication. Board members are also asked to have their video turned on so you are visible to the viewing public. Donna, could you go ahead and take the roll call, please?
Holly Johnson?
Here.
Angela Van Kraus?
Present.
Mike Eister?
Here.
Matt Keating?
Here.
Chelsea Jennings?
Here.
Rosie Pryor?
Here.
And Lisa Fragala?
Present. Thank you. We'll start this evening's work session with an acknowledgement of homeland and Donna Shmolek is going to read that for us this evening.
We begin our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homeland of the Kalapuyia people. The Kalapuyia were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted and destroyed. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapuyia.
Thank you, Donna. And I am going to insert one more item tonight before we begin our agenda. I'd like to take a moment of silence prior to our work session tonight in memory of the eight people killed in the Atlanta area SPA shootings, the majority of whom were Asian American women. These shootings, I believe, were racially motivated and represent the most extreme level of violence against women. Equally important is that we recognize the significant increase in hate crimes being reported against Asian American Pacific Islander communities. These individuals should not remain invisible. They were mothers and grandmothers. They worked hard to support their families. They loved to dance and to sing. They were an integral part of their community. So I will read their names, followed by a moment of silence. Deelana Ashley Yon, Jai Ghi Tang, Dao Yu Feng, Hyung Jung Grant, Soon Cha Kim, Soon Cheong Park, Young Ah Yu, Paul Andre Miguel. Okay, so thank you for that moment of honoring those individuals. And I'm going to ask the board that we adopt the agenda with flexibility so that I can move one of the agenda items up to the top of the list that we have a guest present. So if there's no opposition to that, I'll adopt the agenda without any opposition with unanimous consent. Okay, great. So I'd like to move Item C, the LCC website redesign, to the first item on our discussion action items tonight. So presenting on that tonight is Brett Roulette, Director of Public Affairs. And I believe presenting with him is Kyle Schmidt, who is our web team lead for the redesign project.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, great. There's Kyle. A little bit of a curve ball moving us up to the top of the agenda, but I appreciate it. We can get Kyle on his way when we're done here. We are real excited to give you a preview this evening of the new website that we've been working on. I get to say "we," but it's been a lot more Kyle and Lori, our web teams, who have been working on this project for the last couple of years. Some of you may recall, you approved in September of 2019 a contract that the college entered into with a company called iFactory out of Boston. They were our preferred selection after an RFP process. iFactory has a great history of working with colleges and universities to redevelop websites and has a strong list of community colleges they've worked with. So they had a really good understanding, almost more than we did as to what we were looking for in this new site. So we got started with them late in 2019. They came out to Lane, visited campus, met with students, got to talk with folks about how the current site that we use works. And then we developed goals and a plan to move forward from there. And I'm gonna let Kyle, I think, talk about all of the exciting stuff from the goals we set for the new website and then share a little bit of a preview with you. We did include in Board docs login information for you. So there's a test site that when we're done this evening, we encourage you to use the login information and link that are provided in the administrative section of Board docs there to explore it a little bit further. Kyle, I'm gonna turn it over to you. For those of you that don't know Kyle Schmidt, he is a man of many hats, but he's our web team lead at the college. He's also our current Chair of College Council. So Kyle, take it away.
So good evening, everyone. So throughout this process, our primary goal has been to make an improved website for prospective students. While all the other populations have some sort of other home online, for prospective students, the website's really their first place and oftentimes their only place they have to interact with the college. So as we look at different pages, as we talk about our process, keep thinking, you know, this content was designed with that audience in mind. Of course, we can't ignore our secondary audiences. We can't ignore our current students. We can't ignore our employees. And it's our hope that things like the EAB implementation are going to create a better home for students. And we plan to maintain the old website, the one that we're using right now, and make some changes to it so that we end up with an employee Intranet. And so while the primary audience is prospective students, there are some other audiences that we know also only have the website. For instance, prospective employees. And with our HR website, we're going to be taking that content and splitting it in things like how to run payroll or what the, you know, how you interact with payroll and banner and whatnot. That'll stay on the current website, which will become the Intranet. But then all the other HR content, we're going to rewrite it and rephrase it so that it still does things like explain what employee benefits are, but it's going to do it kind of with a lens of thinking about prospective employees. So our process so far, we started back in fall 2019. And our first phase was discovery. We started with a long questionnaire. iFactory reviewed all of our analytics, all of our site data. They ran some user surveys. We did three employee stakeholder focus groups and one student focus group. And we found that the website was geared, our current website, was geared towards passive information presentation rather than proactive guidance towards taking actions to become a student or to move to the next step in the enrollment process. Now we moved into a user experience and information architecture phase where we developed four user personas. A persona is like a made-up person who you're not writing or designing the website for them, but as you review each page, you kind of think, how would this pretend person think about this page? Does it work for them? So for instance, we had a prospective traditional student named Colleen, and we had a whole two-page story about her. And as we developed her information architecture, which is kind of the organization of the pages, we would think, well, how would this work for Colleen? We also had personas for non-traditional prospective students, prospective international students, and community members. Then we built wireframe mockups for how the website was going to look and just see how all the content fits together. It's kind of like little paper cutouts of different things you want to see in the website that you can shuffle around to see how the different pieces fit. And we identified a content strategy. iFactory reviewed all the different webpages on our current website, of which there are thousands, and mapped those to each of those personas and tried to figure out, you know, can each of these personas accomplish all of the goals that we think they're going to have? And where do we have gaps? And they made a lot of recommendations for places that we need to develop content that we don't have at all. One early recommendation out of that process was to shift away from the way we've currently organized the site, which is essentially by the way we've structured our institution, like our organizational hierarchy, and instead shift to a task-oriented or a functional organization. So instead of having separate financial aid, student employment, and scholarships websites, we would have one paying-for-college website that presents all that information in a much better organized manner. And we moved into visual design. In visual design, we started with mood boards, and then we looked at different websites that we liked, and we talked about, we piloted a couple of different simple mockups, and then they actually built us two or three like pretty comprehensive mockups of websites that we tried out with a couple of different people to see what worked well. And we landed on one that we thought was app-inspired, where the goal was simple and clear with what the function of every page is. And that brought us into testing. We did two rounds of user testing with actual prospective students and iterated on what we found in the first set of testing results to make some improvements. We tested both the visual design to make sure that the visual design was helping to steer people the right way along the content and also the organization of the content to make sure that people, when we'd give them a question like, where would you find financial aid? And then they'd have a mockup of the menu, and we'd ask them, why'd you click that link? Why'd you click that link? And we made sure that for, on a series of different tasks, they were able to find the right place. We did all of our testing at mobile size, since we know that two years ago, when we first kicked off this project, 44% of all of our prospective student visits were either on a tablet or a mobile phone. Then iFactory actually built the website for us, and they finished that up right around Christmas. And they handed it over to us to first do some initial quality assurance on and do a little bit of content entry. This last January, we finally moved the website onto campus. And that takes us to where we are now, which is finishing up content entry and linking everything up. iFactory actually took care of moving all 5,000 current pages on our website into the new website. And then we've gone through and been eliminating the ones that are going to stay in the Intranet, properly linked them up, and make, kind of adapt everything to the new design language. As of today, there are 1,200 pages on the new website, and I expect by the time we launch, we're going to get that under 1,100. That's a lot less than when we launched the last website, when it was at 5,500, and even more or less than in 2011, when there were like 13,000 pages. Because we're going to have so many fewer pages, it's going to offer us a couple of, some new abilities to improve our content. For the first time, we're actually going to have the same set of people going through and reviewing all of the content on the page for tone and voice. So it should be, everything's going to sound like it by that same friendly but authoritative voice. And we're going to change. Right now, there's a whole bunch of different web editors. There's over 200 people that are able to log in and make changes. When we launched the new website, there's only going to be about four. And those are the people that are going to do all of the edits for at least the first year, just to, you know, maintain that same voice. And we'll add people as we're able to in the future. But that will also let us stay on top of making sure our content is current a little bit better than we can now. I should also note that the new CRM project, the Target X project that was approved a couple months back, is going to be an important component of this, as many of the web forums on the website try to steer people into that CRM so we can do continual communications with them as they work towards their admissions process. And with that, so let's take a look at some, take a look at the webpage.
Quick question. You mentioned EAB, and I'm just not familiar with what that acronym is.
Sure, that came out of the title, "Three Grant." I couldn't tell you what EAB stands for either, but I know it's an advising tool. And it should provide a student portal where students can set up appointments with their advisors, see what courses they still need to take, see the progress on degree.
Thanks.
There we go. There's the new, this is the new homepage. So right up at the top, we have our primary calls to action. This, "Get info, visit us, and apply." There are the three things that we most want everyone to do when they first land on this website. This, "Get info," if you enter your email, it will take your email and feed that automatically into a short form that'll feed directly into the CRM. This, "What are your goals?" block will hopefully take care of, you may, you may be familiar with this page, which no one likes at all, where there's all these different buttons. We're hoping to replace that more with this, since this should steer you directly to the right steps for you.
Kyle, do you want to take questions along the way, or would you rather? I have a question about that Page 1 back up here where it says, "Put in your email." Is that the only way you can advance from this place?
Not at all.
Okay. Great.
I have a question, Kyle. So it looks like, is that the placement of the box right here, "Get info"? It looks kind of small. And I think most people are familiar with it up at the top, you know, the tabs at the top. So is that pretty much what you're going to, your, or?
So if I shift, if I shift over to the mobile phone size, that's going to be right up front.
Oh, okay, okay.
And even as you get out to tablet size, it's?
Oh, okay, yeah, that looks a lot, looks a lot different. It looks really small on the desktop, though. But I guess it's right there where your cursor?
Well, and my screen is likely larger than the vast majority of screens that we're going to see.
Okay.
There's been a significant leap, has there not, in the last couple of years in regards to usage on mobile devices? Is that, is that what the thinking is there?
Yeah. When we launched the last website, we were under 10%. And it was over 20, like 2016, 2017, and then we're over 40 right now for prospective students.
And on the menu, are they also able to get this information, the drop-down menu?
I'm so glad you asked. Yeah. So when they click on the menu, it'll be right there. There'll also be these audience-specific pages to provide a little bit of content for each of those audience. One of the ones that iFactory identified as needing is a specific site for military and veterans on their enrollment processes because they're a little bit different. These six categories are the primary buckets under which we're going to sort all of our content. We'll go through this here in a second. As we scroll down, our focus on careers, our primary value proposition, some of our success stories, demonstrate different things that are happening at the college, and then back to a call to action down at the bottom. So our, of course, our primary, our product, if you will, is our programs. And if we drill right into one of our programs, this is going to be kind of an example of what our new program pages look like. Those call-to-actions for this program are right up at the top. All the programs are going to directly integrate with Career Coach. These are, if you're not familiar with the way this widget works, these are real salaries from job postings in our region for the specific ONET code associated with this program. One of the things that we learned through our focus groups was that we, students wanted it to be more clear what the cost for the program are and what the time for the program is. So both of those are called out specifically here with options to learn more, give a little more detail on those, because of course those can get complicated in a hurry. Accounting is a bit of a funny one because it's both a transfer and a CT program. For most programs, you would only have one box here. And then all the certificates that are embedded with it. For each program, we wanted a space to showcase the faculty. All the students in the focus groups talked about how the faculty were one of the highlights of their experience at Lane, so we wanted to make sure to draw attention to them wherever we could. Some other suggestions for other programs that they might be interested in, ones that are similar to, in this case, similar to accounting.
Question?
Yeah.
The faculty spotlights, do those rotate, change, shift?
They're fixed but adjustable. So each program will pick which ones are theirs.
And likewise for the students, will they be rotating as well, student spotlights?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to shift that every once in a while. If there's no students on this page, but yeah.
Part of the reason I'm asking about that is, these four people who are going to work on this, are they going to work on this full-time?
Do you edit the pages?
Yeah.
Yeah, so of those four people, two of us will be working on it full-time, and which actually matches the two people that we've had working on the website full-time for the last four or five months when we've been in a content freeze.
And you're satisfied that that will enable the college to keep this communications option current and fresh? That's enough resource?
And we can always use more resources, right? But I'm optimistic, more optimistic about this process than I am about our current one.
And it won't be, it won't create a choke point, a bottleneck?
Yeah, we've been able to, right, we've been able to respond to most requests to update pages within about 48 hours since we froze content in December. It's a little harder this week because my coworker is on vacation, but normally, 48 hours.
Thanks, that's real helpful.
Quick observation, Kyle. There, to Rosie's point about, you know, a lack of rotation, it seems pretty static. There isn't much movement. Is that intentional? Is that, does that slow down anything, or is that just a stylistic choice?
So animations are complicated. We can't actually have anything that's moving constantly without providing some mechanism deposit due to ADA rules. So there's a very limited amount of animation kind of built in.
Curious, okay.
I have a question, I'm sorry. I'm just curious, who, what, from what angle, what department, which departments, which staff are going to be updating this information? And is there going to be any input from the community or from the students? Or has that even been determined yet to update?
For the initial content collection or ongoing updates?
Ongoing, I'm more concerned about ongoing. I imagine that the initial is going to be what it is. But going forward, in updating content or the spotlights, yeah, just curious, who's going to be the people who are updating the website? Are they the same people who have always updated the website?
Yeah, so the end of the day, Lori and I are going to be the two that make almost all of the edits. The actual content on the website will mostly be changed based on the feedback of the department faculty. However, I do know they, their advisory groups, who I expect have some impact over what's going to be shown.
And there's other platforms that students can use. You know, for example, the student organizations and student government has a platform called Engage that they can use to send messages out to the student body and to communicate about events on campus. So it depends what, you know, what communications you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up in regards to the animation question? And if you could, please go to the homepage. It has to do with that first picture. At the very top, it's a beautiful photo of our center building. And just, it's a visually striking one, but it's also one that lacks people. And people are essentially the heart and soul of our community college. If this picture were to be populated with persons, students, staff, classified managers, of all walks of life, as one's visit on this website, you know, the longer you're on, the more people are populated. How would a tactic like that, how would, how does that go up against ADA requirements? You said, you said that there's no animation because of ADA, but I'm not connecting the dots. Could you better explain that, please?
So a couple of things. First, you said there's a lack of people in the photos, which, and that's actually a really big problem for me, just because it's essentially impossible to get photos of campus right now with people on them. And that's one of the biggest struggles we've had throughout the pandemic, just in terms of updating our photography.
I've promised, I've promised Kyle that as soon as we have people back on campus, we're going to update our photo library.
But the specific, the specific concern is that
And you're satisfied that that will enable the college to keep this communications option current and fresh? That's enough resource?
And we can always use more resources, right? But I'm, I'm optimistic, more optimistic about this process than I am about our current one.
And, and it won't be, uh, it won't create a, a choke point, a bottleneck.
Yeah, we've been able to, right, we've been able to respond to most requests to update pages within about 48 hours since we froze content in December. It's a little harder this week because my, my coworker is on vacation, but normally 48 hours.
Thanks, that's real helpful.
Um, quick observation, Kyle. There, there, to, to Rosie's point or about it, you know, a lack of rotation. It seems pretty static, there isn't much movement. Is that, is that intentional? Is that, is that, does that slow down anything, or is that just a stylistic choice?
So animations are complicated, we can't actually have anything that's moving constantly without providing some mechanism to pause it due to ADA rules. So there's a very limited amount of animation kind of built in.
Curious, okay.
I have a question, I'm sorry. I'm just curious who, what, from what angle, what department? Which departments, um, which staff are going to be updating this information? And is there going to be any input from the community or from the students? Or, um, has that even been determined yet to update?
For the initial content collection or ongoing updates?
Um, ongoing, I'm, I'm more concerned about ongoing. I, I imagine that the, the initial is going to be what it is. But going forward, um, in updating content or, um, the spotlight, um. Yeah, just curious, who, who, who's going to be the, the, the people who are updating the website? Are, are they the same people who have always updated the website?
Yeah, so the end of the day, Lori and I are going to be the two that make almost all of the edits. The actual content on the website will mostly be, um. Changed based on the feedback of the department faculty. However, I do know they beat their advisory groups who I expect to have some impact over what's going to be shown.
And there's other platforms, uh, that students can use. You know, for example, the student organizations and student government has a platform called Engage that they can use to send messages out to the student body and to communicate about events on campus. So it depends what, you know, what communications you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow up in regards to, to, uh, the, the animation question? And, uh, if you could, please go to the homepage, it has to do with that, that, uh, that first picture. At the very top, it's a beautiful photo of our center building. And just, it's a visually striking one, but it's also one that lacks people. And people are, are essentially the, the, the heart and soul of our community college. If this picture were to be populated with persons, students, staff, classified managers, uh, of all walks of life as, as one's. Visit on this website, you know, the longer you're on, the more, more people are populated. How, how would a tactic like that? How would, how does that go up against ADA requirements? You, you said, you said that the, there's the, there's no animation because of, of ADA, but I'm, I'm not connecting the dots. Could you better explain that, please?
So a couple of things, first, you said, um, there's a lack of people in the photos, which, and that's actually a really big problem for me. Just because it's essentially impossible to get photos of campus right now with people on them. And that's one of the biggest struggles we've had throughout the pandemic, just, it's just in terms of updating our photography.
I've promised, I've promised Kyle that as soon as we have people back on campus, we're going to update our photo library.
But the specific, the specific concern is that you, if there is an animation that plays on a website, there needs to be a mechanism to pause that animation or stop that animation. If it lasts more than a certain number of seconds.
Okay, that's curious, that's the first time I've heard anything about that, that.
Yeah, that's, it's the WCAG level double A guidelines.
Got it, okay.
Matt, that's such a great observation, because, um, on the left over here, I, I, my screen is cut off. I think it says it's great to be at L C C, what does it say on the left over here?
Great to be at L A N S.
But there's no one there, so that kind of contradicts, and so I think that's a great observation. But even now, if it was current in the times, I mean, if we had people social distancing out there with masks on. I don't know, it might be worth a photo op to have some people, um, and see people from different walks of life at the college, since it's so great to be there. Otherwise, I'm looking at a blank slate here. So I don't know, that's something I think to explore. But yeah, that's a great observation, Matt. How great is it to be there, but no one's there, kind of, so to speak? So I don't know, maybe, I mean, during now, even now, we could social distance and have people there with masks and, you know, in wheelchairs. And sitting distancing, so just, just a little input.
I will actually be there tomorrow, getting my vaccine with my camera. So we'll see, we'll see if there's anybody on, walking around.
I see Marge has her hand up, Marge.
Yeah, I, I think the point is very well taken, and stock photos with pic, I'm very confident they can put some up. Uh, until we get fresh new ones, so I, I really appreciate that. I know we have some photos, I think they're probably just very proud of this one, but we'll, we'll go for people until we get new ones. So actually, it's a very good suggestion, thanks.
And, and a lot of these have just been placeholders from the beginning, so don't, don't worry, a lot of these will, will rotate or change.
And there's a lot of missing photos through, um, as we look at some of the other pages, you'll notice at the top, almost always a big empty white block. And our, our goal is to put photos in there, we just haven't had somebody working on that yet.
And I, I know we've kind of used up the time that you gave us on the agenda here. Uh, I do, I do want to say that just, you know, throughout this process, both Kyle and Lori Brennan, who is, uh, the other member of our web team. They've done an amazing job. The one thing that you always want to hear from your folks, uh, is that the vendor that we're working with is the best vendor that they've ever worked with. And the one thing you want to hear from the vendor is that our folks are the best folks that they've ever worked with. I mean, it's just been, um, both ends, I think it's been a great team working on this project, and I'm really proud of the work that Kyle and Lori have done. And really excited to launch this, uh, this summer.
Got another quick question, if we have time.
Uh, go for it, yeah, Matt.
Uh, I really liked the comparison to our four-year partner across the street, uh, in regards to cost. And I wonder if we could even drive that home more by including an Oregon State University, um, comparison as well. I don't know where the page was, if it was on that first page, or if you clicked a financial aid. Yeah, there you go. Um, yeah, I, I, just, just so it's, I mean, it's apples to oranges, the community college versus the four-year. But if, if the prospective student sees L A N S in comparison to the University of Oregon and maybe, you know, O S U and, and Bushnell. Just throwing it out there, not that that might necess, not that that's necessarily the right approach, you know, maybe it's, maybe this binary is the best approach. But that, that's what jumped out at me when I saw this as well. But I really love the opportunity to compare, uh, compare costs, it's great.
Angela?
Thank you, um, I've been loving looking through this, I also looked through it on my telephone, so I, I think it does show better on mobile phone. And I, I really appreciate that, I think it makes a lot of sense. It seems like there's been a lot of thought and a lot of work put into this. Um, obviously, there's more to do, still in development. Um, I, I was actually interested in that infographic as well, the, um, price comparison to University of Oregon. I was wondering if that's 43% less per year or in general? I'm guessing, you know, things are not finalized yet, but for me, looking at that, I wonder, and so I would, um. Maybe hope that, uh, that could be specified in the final product.
But also note that the number is currently wrong, because it's, it's from when we first did this project, and we haven't updated those numbers yet.
Chelsea?
Thank you, I just wanted to, um, you know, thank Kyle tonight for coming here to present this to us. Um, I had, um, I took some time to play around with the link that was provided. And, um, you know, there's obviously still more work to be done already, there's such an improvement. And I also want to appreciate the, um, you are articulating the process that it took to, um, you know, create this. This is a, you know, building a new website is a very long and arduous process. Something that my, the organization I was part of was going through. And it takes a long time and a lot of work, and so, um, thank you for explaining the process to us, and I really look forward to seeing this launch.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Kyle. I'm going to move us on to, um, our next agenda item, which is Program and Services Sustainability Update by Provost Gerald. And, um. Paul, I was wondering if you were going to go through the whole thing? Or if we might take it one piece at a time and see if people have questions at each one?
Yeah, I, you, you know, thank you, Chair Fragala and Board for the opportunity to present this. No, I don't plan on going over them one by one. I was just going to give you just a couple little takeaways in terms of some common themes, I think, that have arisen through all of these. And then just simply open it up to you all for discussion, and I'll be here for questions that you may have to answer, questions you may have.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, so again, thanks for the opportunity to, to present this work to you. The, the summary of this work, um, as you know, we started this work about a year ago, looking at, uh, some programs and services across the college. That stuck out to us for one reason or another, that, that might need a little bit of attention. Uh, in this work here, um, what I'm presenting to you is, uh, other results of a more detailed look at five programs, academic programs, uh, one service and one, uh, academic department. Most of these, uh, the programs in particular are high-cost, low F T E programs that are mainly in the career technical education program. If you had an opportunity to look through, uh, the documents, both the summary document and the, the more lengthy document. You might have noticed a few themes, uh, in terms of looking at what were some of the, uh, uh, reasons that, uh, we highlighted these programs in particular. You would see that most all of these programs showed significant declines in enrollments or completions, or perhaps both. They had escalating expenses, declining revenues. Um, and there might have been a, um, a mismatch between the cost of a program to the student relative to perhaps what their entry level earning potential might be for that particular training. So those were some of the themes that, 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 uh, emerged, I think, that, that led us to look at these, um, programs. You also may have noticed that there's really common themes throughout the recommendations in particular. First, uh, we're, we're not bringing to you any recommendations for any actions, uh, no program eliminations, uh, or anything to that effect. Basically, what you're, you're seeing as a result of this is that most of the recommendations that are coming out of here just, just center around curriculum revisions. Curriculum visions that allow us to align the programs better with entry level requirements, uh, for the workforce. Maybe curriculum needs, because there's gaps in training that have emerged as a result of some of the, the, uh, studies that we undertook. And also partnerships for, uh, physical, uh, financial sustainability, uh, partnerships with the community. We will continue to monitor these programs in addition to all other programs, uh, uh, over the, uh, the, the coming years. And, and really looking to try to make some improvements or some significant improvements for, for our students, uh, within the next year. So, so that's kind of the overview, uh, you have the documents there. I, I wanted to, to allow you all to have time to talk amongst yourselves, and I can be here as a resource for you or answer any questions that you might have about these.
Okay, so, um, do we have questions for Paul? Rosie?
Thank you, um, first of all, I would just like to thank, uh. President Hamilton and, and Paul for this excellent analysis. It, it, it is a little unnerving, to say the least. Mostly because, uh, there's only one program that's even beginning to appear to be cost-effective. And so I, this is what's on my mind. As a board member, I would like to suggest that the board. Work on a policy. Direction for administration that would establish some expectations around. Program. Vitality, I, I don't, I don't know really the right word to use. But I, I think, for example, if the count, if the, uh, board had, had a policy. That directed that anytime a program winds up in the red. For three successive academic years, that trips some kind of, uh. Action. And part of the reason why I think it would be valuable for the board to have at least a philosophical discussion about this. Uh, perhaps in our, in our June, July retreat. Is that if, if certain, um. Triggers are put in place for this kind of rigorous. Evaluation scrutiny of all programs and services on campus to occur. I, and, and those triggers become a part of our culture at L A N S. So that faculty and staff all, all embrace and understand those policy level expectations and triggers. Then everybody's, everybody's got a piece of the action, if you will. Everybody has a, has an understanding of, of what, what kind of performance would cause a program to, to come under the harsh spotlight? That this seems to be. I think it's a very healthy evaluation and analysis of programs. I mean, to reveal that programs have been, uh, kind of, uh, not paying for themselves for as many as five years in a row. That's, that's challenging, that's, that's of concern. And I have always asked administration, tell us how you would move resources around. Tell us how you would use resources differently in order to revitalize programs that seem like they would be important to the county, important to residents. But, but. Declining enrollment over this many years in a row would suggest that, that something's not working.
Right, and if I could, can I elaborate a little bit, just, just for clarity? That, uh, the, these aren't the only programs that are in the red, so to speak. In reality, you know, the colleges, it's not unique to L A N S, colleges have many programs that operate in the red. They're, the, we, you know, being, especially community colleges, because, you know, if you look at L A N S, we have, we are comprehensive community college. We have programs for transfer, we have programs for workforce development. It does tend to be those programs in career technical education, workforce development, that are high-cost, low F T E by design. And sometimes by, because they have to be, because of accreditation.
Right.
Uh, requirements and things like that. The issue is, is that we have to balance a portfolio, right? We have to balance those programs with programs that tend to be low-cost, high F T E. And these typically are, are more of the transfer level programs, a lot of the, the social science programs, mathematics and things like that. And we rely on those making money, right? So that we can, as a portfolio, support these other. But the question really has to be, what is the portfolio we can support? And then I agree with you, I, the way I would look at it is, we, we should really develop benchmarks for programs. That if you fall below a benchmark for a certain amount of time, then that creates some, some higher level of, of, of care and attention.
I just want the board to be in a position of making a conscious, a purposeful choice. I, I remember when we talked about, um, the, um, Center for Meeting and Learning. And whether or not supporting that operation was tantamount to supporting a learning lab as part of an academic program, culinary and hospitality. Or, or if it was a, like a side gig for the college. And I, I can support a certain amount of general fund, um. Dependence, knowing that it, it's, it's just part of that program. It's, it's going to be necessary, it's like, you're never going to pay for, uh, the transit system through the fare box. You, you, you just accept that. And, but I would just like the board to be able to be in a position to make those choices consciously. So I like your idea of benchmarks, so thank you very much, Lisa.
Um, so do we have any other questions? I, I do myself in the queue, but, um, just want to make sure. Okay, well, um, I am curious, um, about. What, what this would look like in the coming year? I, I mean, I, I know we, you gave us an overview previously about, um. You know, the, the schedule that we utilize this, this year, and I know you've heard me say I'd love to see it moved back to earlier in the year, to get an earlier start on it in the year. But when I look at the, um, different, so when I, when I look at the, um, the, the longer document. I see, you know, like ALS has recommend review, aviation and maintenance is actively monitor. Aviation and flight technology, um. I'm curious about the move to the general fund. So there, you know, there's these actively monitor, um, words that are used. But then when I look in the executive summary, I see much more specific recommendations. And so I'm wondering, Paul, I'm like, I'm curious, like, what are the assumptions that we would start the calendar year with? What would it look like to communicate to, um, the people that this impacts and who you would be engaging with? And, and what would the engagement look like? And so what would, what would next year look like?
Well, I, I, I'll, I think, I, I've, I think there are two, two questions or two, two things I'd like to address with, with, with your questions there. One of them is about the process. I, I have said all along, and I agree with you, that, that this, this is not, and we shouldn't be engaging in this exercise every budget cycle, right? To try to find money, because that's not really what it's about. We should be, to Rosie's point before, we should be engaging in this exercise routinely to make sure that we are offering programs and services, uh, that are, are, uh, uh, important and needed to the community. Both the internal, uh, community, the L A N S community, and also the community at large that, that we're providing workforce for. So that's one piece of it, we should make sure that we do that, and that we can support all of those, that program, right? So it is loosely related to budget in that sense, but it's not an exercise to, to try to balance a budget. So I don't, I, the timing of it, the reason it, it fell out the way it did this time was because, I think, just because of when I picked it up. And if there were going to be, um, recommendations or actions from the board that involved program closures. Those would have to occur by a particular date, and those dates happen to co-assign with springtime, uh, for the next academic year. We would have to have decisions made by March, notifications by April and May. So I think that's what led to it this time, but I would really like to work moving forward on developing a process, not just for these programs, but for all programs or programs we decide to look at. That's not so tightly linked to that piece, because I don't think it does these programs any service to, to link them to a budget decision. The other thing I think that, and, and, and I'll work on, on trying to, to develop that cycle, if you will, uh, uh, moving forward. The other piece about these programs in particular that we looked at and what to expect, nearly all of the, um. Solutions, if you will, or I guess I should say, potential solutions to some of the, the issues involve curriculum reform. There is a cycle for curriculum reform. If we are going to, and you'll notice my, a lot of my recommendations said, well, I want recommendations to me by, uh, uh, you know, April or June, I can't really remember. I can't really remember what, what dates, not very, but it's related to a curriculum cycle. In order to be able to offer classes for fall of 2023, we have to have them through the curriculum process, let's say by April, so that we can engage in them and get them approved by our curriculum approval process and then also ultimately to the state. So, so over the next academic year, next year, 21, 22, we will be looking at curriculum revisions that might address some of these. And, and faculty are responsible for the curriculum revisions. I'll provide support to that. Other folks will provide support to that. But we'll be working with the faculty for the curriculum revisions. Those will make them their way through the curriculum committee next year, over next academic year, for implementation in the fall of 2022. So that's kind of the cycle for these programs where there were some. You also notice some of them, like Flight Technology and Culinary Arts, they've already done their curriculum revisions. We just need to see, give them time to see how are these going to work? So that's the monitoring piece of that, is to see, are these curriculum revisions that were made, are they addressing some of the concerns that were, were highlighted? And for the most part, I think they will. We just need time to, to, you know, let them work that plan, if you will.
Matt?
Thanks, Lisa. Paul, a couple of things jump out at me. I'm going to hone in on the Aviation Academy Aviation Maintenance, which is, I believe, a critical program, both for the overall health of our economy and, and, and for the diverse array of, of programs we offer at Lain Community College. The, the recommendations blurb says that the AMT, the Aviation Maintenance Technology, I guess, program is overstamped with full-time faculty, leading to excess costs relative to revenue. That sounds very much to me like a budgetary statement. And yet I'm hearing that this isn't connected to, to the budget. So that there's a, there's a disconnect there that, that, that I'm experiencing.
It has budget implications. Yeah.
Right, right. Moreover, it says that the core success rates and enrollments have been increasing over the past few years, which is great. However, it also says the program completions have not been strong. And it says, quote, "Students do not see the value in completing the degree and often leave the program prior to degree and certificate completion." Has there been an intentional effort to, to gauge that, that student body as to why they're not completing the degree? Are they, are they getting jobs in the community?
Yeah, I think.
And, and so where, where are the data points? If, you know, was there a survey of these students? And if so, can, can that be shared with the board? Because if they're leaving the program prior to degree and certificate completion, and they're getting work, that's a success that we should be celebrating.
So let me comment a couple on that. So, so one, I think in general, that's true for a lot of our CTE programs that in times when historically there's low unemployment and high demand, employers will take our students before they complete the program. Now, that could be an indication that our program is too long, right? If, if we are successfully preparing people for entry-level work in a shorter amount of time, then we should probably look at that piece too. Maybe, maybe we could scaffold this in a way so that it's not a two-year all or none thing. It's a one plus one or something that allows students to get a completion, something that denotes a completion. I, I would agree with you that it's a success from that student's point of view. They got a job. That was the reason they started. But it actually, they might not realize that they're limiting themselves by not completing the degree or having an award for further advancement. So I think that there's, and it's going to be unique from occupation to occupation, sector to sector. Some, some of them, they have to have a degree because they have to sit for an exam. It's licensing, so then that takes care of that piece. But if it really is just entry-level work, we need to look at what are those exit points? Are students getting jobs? And are they getting jobs in the fields that we're training them for? And then if the answer to that's yes, you're right, that's a success. But then we really need to look at our program and ask the question, do we have it structured in a way that allows us to award to completions along the way? We're really actively looking at, and, and, and this is, in fact, what some of our programs have recently done to great success, like welding and fabrication, where they've taken what was a two-year all or none program, and they've chucked it out into, to smaller completions. So they allow people to move in and out on that kind of career school ladder, kind of at their leisure, right? That when their life fits it, they can come back and upskill some more and then go out and have higher earning potential. So we're looking at that for all of them. I don't think, in particular with Aviation Maintenance, I don't think that they have done that survey. They did just start the program review cycle. And as part of that, we will recommend that they do survey, survey their, not graduates, but, or completers, but they'll survey their students to see if they can get a sense of why they leave. That's always a challenging thing to track because it relies on interacting with the students and the students being willing to interact with us so that we know what they've left for. We don't always know when they stop coming.
Mike, was your hand up?
Yes, thanks. I, I'm not seeing the raised hand feature on my screen, so.
That's okay. Gotcha.
So the two comments, one is I agree with Rosie that, that we should have criteria. I, I, I don't think the criteria should come from the board. I think it should be proposed to the board by the college. And I don't think it should be mechanical. I don't think it should be, if you hit this particular benchmark, that automatically results in X or Y. But I think it should be criteria that calls attention, calls our attention to a program for judgment about. And I think that's exactly what Paul is doing. Everything I read tells me that's exactly what he's doing. He's looking at criteria that bring to his attention whether or not a program should be studied, whether or not there should be adjustments, whether or not he should propose a staffing change. So I think Paul is on the right track. I think that the criteria is a good idea. It should not be mechanical. My second point has to do with Matt's point about budget. I don't think budget should be a sole determiner, but I think that it is a factor. I, I agree with you also, Lisa, that the timing of this, this process is unfortunate if it coincides with our budget season. I'd rather have it, that those programs be evaluated on their own weight, separate from the budget process, but with budget being one of the criteria that's a consideration. So I hope that's not confusing, but that's where I'm at on this.
Holly?
Matt, or Mike, a, a good way to look at it, and also Lisa, to come back to, to your idea about timing. I mean, it, I think it might be nice if we think about fall as the kind of time when recommendations might come to you. We, we spend the entire preceding year looking at programs, engaging with stakeholders in the community, both internal and external community, and recommendations would come in fall. And that, that, that puts it squarely at the beginning of an academic year as far as recommendations. And they can, can be working on some of those recommendations throughout that year even. And it really does kind of uncouple it from that. We're making this decision because we're, we need to balance a budget because that's part of it, but it has to be more holistic if we look at it that way.
I have Holly next in the queue.
I think Rosie's hand was up before me.
Well, you, no, you go ahead.
Okay, I'll go. Thank you. So what I was thinking and the input that I have, and I'm curious about, is how attractive these programs are to our community? Has that been evaluated? Has it been revamped, rewritten, re-launched? For some of these programs that are struggling, I mean, understandably, during these times, lots of things are struggling, lots of programs. But, you know, at, at one point, these programs were probably in demand, which is why we have them here. And they were probably at one point well-attended. So I'm wondering if that has been considered in the way that we are pitching them to our community? Is it the same pitch? Is it a new pitch? And then my other comment was along the lines with what Matt had to say about students ending their program early without completing. I hope to think it was because they got a job in the field. But maybe it wasn't as attractive once they got into the program as they seen it on paper, you know? Is that a reason? So I, what, what was the reason for them to leave the program? Hopefully, it's because they were connected and they, you know, got a job in the field. But what if it wasn't? And they didn't feel like they were going to be able to secure a position? And could that be because we don't have in place that community partnership where they can find an internship and, and get some skills and, and training in the field that they're pursuing their degree? So just a few observations about how we are promoting these programs? And is there, are there new tactics in promoting them in the future? So that we can increase enrollment and, and, and let the community know that they are still, you know, programs that are available, at least, you know, while they are still here. And I'm glad to hear that we are going to, you know, the programs are going to be sustained for the next year, which is awesome, because I think now more than ever, people are looking probably to change their career or seek a new field or a new, you know, skill. So I'm hoping that we have something in place or the college has something in place, the program, the, the department, to relaunch, re-kick, you know, kick off, you know, re-advertise, re-promote. We can do a whole bunch of re's here to get these programs, you know, attended again, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I think the, the connection to the community is vital, whether it's these workforce training programs or if it's, for example, like ALS and developmental education. That's incredibly important for the community, as is the specialized support services. So, so I think that, that, that's a vital piece. And I think those are the connections that we're really trying to strengthen as well. And it's really about relevance. And you want to make sure that when the graduates, if a graduate comes in and they study with us for a year or two years, when they come out, they have that skill for that point in time and what's needed. And so it is a constant retuning and fine tuning to make sure that we're always meeting those needs. And, and I, I think, you know, everybody can do a better, you know, as usual, we could always do a better job than we're doing. I think in general, we do a pretty good job with that. But, but I, I take what you say seriously. And, and, and we, we are looking to try to make sure that, that what we are offering is relevant and the students have earning potential when they come out.
Okay, so Marge, I, I see your hand up. And so I'm guessing you, maybe you wanted to respond to Holly. I did just want, and then I have two other people in the queue. I did just want to note, we, we are at time for this agenda item. So if there is no opposition to it, I'd like to extend it and let Marge respond to Holly. And then I have Rosie and Matt. You're muted, Marge.
Sorry, thank you. In May, when we bring you information on the strategic plan, you're going to, you're going to get some anecdotal and quantitative data. You're going to start seeing what these companies are saying about us. So the good news is they want graduates in manufacturing. We can't get them to them fast enough. The good news is they want them in hotel restaurateur, but not during a pandemic. The good news is they want them in, in the, in flight. We had over a dozen business and industry folks literally begging us to keep the, the flight program open. But now, for the first time, they're going to help us. They're going to help us look for capital. They're going to help us figure out ways to have partnerships to be more sustainable. You kind of have to put a call out for help sometimes because these business and industries have never been asked to be a part of it. We say, put, you know, put some skin in the game. But our local hospitals have always been a part of helping. But business and industry has heard that. And, and Holly, you are absolutely right. They leave, the good news is they leave because they love our graduates, but they leave early because they've got the skill sets. So what Paul said is critical. You have to build a shorter-term certificates. So the good news is a lot of them have it done. Some of them are working on them. And I think within the next year, we should finally see some outcomes. We should see those numbers go up with our graduates. So more to come in May when we talk to you about strategic planning because CTE is hugely in the community's mind right now.
Thank you. My question for Paul is based on your experience preparing this particular report. I'm, I'm curious about the scope of this work on an annual basis. And the reason is twofold. One, I, I want to know if you feel like July is too soon to think that you might talk with us about this set of benchmarks that could become that, that triggering mechanism, that, that opportunity for us to, to set some policy level parameters around program performance? Not, that's my first question. And if, if Ju-, if July is too soon, can we absolutely count on talking about something like that in January? And right this instant now, I can't remember. Oh, how, how, how much of this can you actually do annually? I mean, I'm assuming this took a fair amount of time and effort.
It did, and it wasn't just me. I mean, I have to say, I, I have a, a really good group of, of, of folks that, that support me in this work. Grant Matthews has been helpful, Richard Plot. Some, a couple of my deans have been really helpful. So, so it's a team effort. I, I, I would say July would be a little bit pushing it. Because I think the benchmarking, while, while, I, I'll, I'll say this, we have to do it. I think it's going to, we'll, we'll find as we get into this, there will be a lot of uniqueness for each program that we're looking at. And we have, you know, several dozen that we might want to be looking at. So I think the, the, that having, we might be able to have a strategy session in January, or in July with a goal of producing some benchmarks by January. I think that might be kind, kind of a good way to think about it. That would give me and my team the summer to, to put a lot of effort into the benchmarking research. But we could maybe have a strategy planning session at the July Board Retreat and then, then more formal in January or whatever, be able to present some, some more concrete information by then. I think that's a reasonable timeline for that. And again, part of it will be, and then how much can we complete each year? It depends on, on what the, you know, a lot of these data are things that we can pull fairly easily. We can automate a good bit of this to be able to pull these data. It's just a matter of taking the time to synthesize it and put that together. So I think as we get more fine-tuned in a, a process, we could probably, you know, put programs on, you know, every, every few years, be looking at a set of programs to, to do a deeper dive in, and, and that would be reasonable. You know, I mean, every year we would be doing it, but not every program every year. We just don't have that bandwidth.
So I, I appreciate enthusiasm for, for this topic. But I, I, believe it or not, our July agenda is already over fall. Marge and I are busy planning all the time. So, and we have an exciting PD planned for that. But we'll definitely have a discussion about it and make sure that we're thinking about it. I just did want to say that we, we have been working on that July retreat quite a lot.
And I think that would be ambitious for this project anyhow.
Matt, I see your hand.
I'm sorry, I will not be at that July retreat, but you will be in good hands. And Paul, I had a quick follow-up. I, I, I appreciate you, you tackling my inquiry. You said that we don't always know why the students left the program. And, and I hear you. And that's one of the reasons why I have heartburn when I read things like, quote, "Students don't see the value in completing the, the degree and often leave the program prior to degree and certificate completion." So it just, it just, it just fall, I, I, I read that and absorbed that as a blanket statement without the data backing that up. So I just wanted to, to, to share that observation. And, 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 and if I could editorialize, you know, all, all, all programs, in particular CTE programs, don't necessarily have to be revenue generating. That's not, we're not a for-profit institution.
Right. None of them will be, quite honestly.
Right.
I mean, it would be rare for them to be.
And even historically, it, 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 when, when demand is high, there's still, there's a significant number of CTE programs that are not revenue generating programs. So I just wanted to, to, to make that observation and that, not that that's an unhealthy thing, but there are, there are, there are program, there are CTE programs in high demand that historically have not been revenue generating. And just looking at, 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 just looking at that one lens, in my opinion, does that program potentially disservice?
Hey, so I, I did have one more thing that I, I wanted to. Hey, um, so I I did have one more thing that I I wanted to. Address. I guess the the one, one of the things that really stands out to me is. The hotel restaurant tourism management and. I I believe we just approved a new. Degree for that at our last board meeting, because it was so poorly reported on. Which is why I'm pretty sure it was that recently. So I, Paul, I'm wondering why when we just spent. A year. Restructuring that program and approving it through the hack. It did get approved through the hack, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, why we would be not giving it the time. To show that the changes that we just made in the last year. Are not able to get traction, and we would be looking at already changing it again in the coming year.
I think I think with that one, quite honestly, that there the, there's a disconnect between what is the credential, the award, I'll say, that is. Required for entry level work and where is the. Where is the the exit point for students and the earning potential for students? Most of the, in hospitality and restaurant tourism management, most of the jobs do not require an AAS. Currently, that program was structured. Uh, only as an AAS. It's not stackable, so it doesn't provide those exit points for students in and to get earning potential. A student would have to complete the whole program. In order to get an award, to get a job, an entry level job for the most part. That required probably a one-year certificate, or even maybe even a less than one-year certificate for the entry level position. So the work that needs to to happen with that program now, the reason that that we pushed the program through. In its current form was to be able to get students into the program, right, to have a program, because our old program had been sunset. Previously, so we wanted to be able to have a mechanism to get students into the program. Now we can do the curriculum revision to provide. More opportunities for award award earning along the way. So it still needs to be restructured again, much like we talked about before in that stackable way. To meet the needs of the of the workforce.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. And we have gone over time quite a bit, but I'm guessing that if people have further conversations, they can reach out to you or or Marge for them.
Certainly, hap- happy to 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 help out.
Okay, great, thank you.
And thank you all.
All right, I'm gonna move us on to our next agenda item. Thanks, everybody, for that. Lots of great conversation about that. It's what these work sessions are for. Our next agenda item is resolution in support of Senate Bill 554. Which we have briefly discussed previously, and I'm gonna let Board Member Matt Keating present on this.
Thank you, Chair Fragala. This Senate Bill. Is co-sponsored by Lane County's own. State Senator James I Manning Jr., a retired police officer, an army veteran. And an alumnus of Lane Community College. And I I won't read the whole resolution to you, but this quote is a powerful one. The senator says that Senate Bill 554 removes intimidation and leads to a healthier workplace. It gives choice to local jurisdictions. It will make our schools safer. Public workers safer, and the community members who need to go to these buildings safer. I'm happy to entertain any, any, any questions anyone has. And or if any, or if appropriate, any board members would like to make a motion.
Matt, remember, we're in a work session, so we're just.
That's right. So so I guess we'll have to vote on this at our next board meeting. Thank you.
But any questions to Matt or any, any. Reflections about it, and it it would be great to get a sense of. What the board is thinking, because if, you know, it, we can also. Add it to the consent agenda at the next board meeting if if we feel that's appropriate as well, or we can add it to the action section and. Have more deliberation about it. We wanted to give people an opportunity tonight.
And Chair Fragala, intentionally, there are links to the, to the one board resolution that was passed, I believe, in 2018. This reference in the links in regards to safe classrooms for all, and there's a link to Senate Bill 554, which passed the state senate. So it's now in front of the House of Representatives, I suspect, within the week. It may be voted on, so our timing could could be just right for our April board meeting. For those who haven't read the bill, it authorizes entities like the college or university or municipalities. That occupy or control public space to adopt ordinance, rule, or policy limiting or precluding affirmative defense. For possession of firearms in public buildings by concealed handgun licensees.
We have any questions or comments? Well, I I'll put myself in the queue. I I just want to thank you for your work on this, Matt, and express my support. For the resolution and for the bill. I I think it's a very appropriate action for an educational institution to be taking. Particularly in this day and age, and so I I am in support of the resolution. Thanks for the thumbs up, Mike.
There we go. Thanks, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Chair Fragala. The real thanks and gratitude goes to Senator Manning and Senator Burdick, co-sponsors of the bill. And Senator Prozansky. A staunch supporter as well. Who I I believe. Has inserted a a powerful amendment to the bill, a dash ten, if memory serves. So thank you to Senator Prozansky for his work as well and his continued advocacy for common sense. Firearms safety mechanisms. I also want to thank Chair Fragala and Vice Chair Pryor for putting your eyes on this, and. I tried adopting every single one of your suggestions. I think the only one, Rosie, of yours that I didn't adopt was I kept. The word veterans as a proper noun, though. API, it 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 indicates that it should be a common noun, as per your suggestion, but military protocol. Suggests it should be capitalized. And so I I, since the senator is a is a veteran and and. I I I kept it as as a proper noun. But I really appreciate the feedback that you you gave to help. Fine tune this resolution and Dr. Hamilton as well. And so I would be honored if this board stood united in its passage to get our lawmakers back. In in support of Senate Bill 554.
Okay, so not seeing. See, oh, Chelsea, Chelsea's got a thumbs up, too. Thanks, Chelsea. Thought that was a raised hand, but I see the thumb now. Okay, I'm gonna move us on to the next agenda item. So we're moving on to board operating principles and. Just as a reminder, these are, these are not policies. These are just. An attempt for us to kind of document some ways that we do business as a board, and there's a tremendous amount of flexibility around them. At our summer retreat, we did look at the annual calendar and the president's evaluation. As well as, I believe, the. I think it was the budget committee members that was in there as well. I can't remember. I know there were three of them. I did add. A few more, and there are a couple of things that I had specific questions. That I wanted to address to the board, but I can also open it up to any feedback that people might have first. Mike?
Uh, thank you for your work on this, Lisa. I think it's really good quality work, and it will. Serve the board and future boards. I've noticed that we have used the, we have sort of used interchangeably the phrase. Operating principles and operating procedures. And to me, these don't seem to be principles as much as they seem to be procedures, and so. Your written. Title was procedures, and it seems like to me like that's, we probably want to stick with that.
Did I say principles?
Yeah.
I may have misspoken, and I apologize for that. They are absolutely procedures. Thanks for noticing that. Yes, procedures. These are not principles. But thank you. Any anybody else? I I do have a sp- a few specific things I wanted to discuss, so I I'm gonna go there. The first one has to do with budget committee members. And in our. In our recent adoption and appointment or recommendation and appointment of budget committee members. Donna and I did have some questions between the two of us, and there were. Some things that came up with different board members about this process. So the practice has always been, as far as I can experience, I have experienced in my short time on the board, that. Every board member recommends. A budget committee member. And the board votes on that recommendation to approve. And there has always been the practice of having. The person come from your zone, but it is not a requirement. And so I just wanted to clarify. Because I did hear different thinking on that sometimes, and so I just wanted to hear what people thought and make sure that I was capturing it correctly. Mike?
That's, I that pretty well outlines the practice that I recall since I've been on the board, which is just a bit longer than you, Lisa. It does seem to me, though, that we agreed at one point that we would advertise vacancies and solicit. Uh, applications. If it doesn't say that, I think we want to continue to do that.
Yes, it does say that. It does say that. We that we will do that, and there is, it's part of the the timeline. Matt?
Yeah, my recollection exactly, by the way. I've, you know, my budget committee member lives in in Zone Four, and yet I was Pat Albright's budget committee member prior to my board service. And so it it. Yeah, I think you 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 perfectly. Di- described the flexibility the board has. What I, what I'd not seen is something I brought up recently, when I believe we had two budget committee members appointed. Though we did have. Resume or letter of interest. And, you know, trusted the board member making the the. The recommendation. It would be nice to. Cement or memorialize a longing from the board to at least be able to. Have a one-on-one with that person, you know, that person, it, you know, it, when when there's a board. Vacancy, it's very clear that the the next board meeting, the board will. Will swear in and will appoint and swear in the the member, but it's nebulous when it describes the budget committee members. I know that they're, they're only operating in the spring during the budget season, but it'd be nice, whether it's virtually or in person, to have some touchstone. With budget committee members, and some have done so, and others have not, and it'd just be nice to have some continuity and consistency, please.
So are you, what what do you mean by touchstone? Are you asking for them to come to the board meeting and say hi?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I can, I can definitely reflect that in there that we invite them. In some capacity. All right, so. Any, does anybody else? Matt, Mike?
I I, it isn't clear to me whether Matt is suggesting an interview.
No, he's not suggesting an interview. He, he's suggesting that, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that. The the board meeting, or maybe even a board meeting after that. Once the person is appointed, that we invite them to come and introduce themselves.
Yeah, yeah, others in the past have done it as part of public comment. Not, I'm not talking about an interview process, Mike, to be clear.
Good.
Okay. All right, great. So if nobody else had any questions on that, I wanted to. Go ahead and point, point our attention to. The board evaluation process and. Like I said, I I typically try to have these reflect. What has been the past practice, but this doesn't actually do that, because. Our practice has always been to discuss board evaluations. At our, at our retreat, at our summer retreat. And I think I just discovered why the summer retreat was in June. Remember, we had that conversation? Why is the summer retreat in June when new board members join in July? Well, this is the reason why, because the board evaluations and the president's evaluation are all, have all historically been discussed. At the summer retreat. So now. If we discuss our evaluations. At the summer retreat, which is in July, we'll be doing a board evaluation. Without the current board. Does that make sense? So I, with Donna's help, we rewrote it a little bit, and so. Basically, the board evaluation. Would now be finishing in June. So that this current board would be reflecting upon. You know, its experience and its practice in the last year, and that we would. Set recommendations and goals to send to the retreat. I mean, now, I understand that we're not always going to have this big of a turnover, but. This would give us a good annual cycle of finishing up. The board evaluation. In June, and then using the July retreat to do more like goal setting. I'm seeing some head shaking, so, okay, great. So that's what you're gonna see reflected in the board evaluation, which will mean. That in June. You know, we will be using part of our work session to be thinking about that. So that takes me to the president's evaluation, which. I I worked on earlier and which we looked at at the winter retreat. The president's evaluation is currently. The timeline is set so that we would be. Discussing it. We, this current board would be filling out. The president's evaluations, and then. It would be at the retreat, the new board with our new members would then be discussing it. So I'd like to suggest that we consider. Using the same timeline for the president's evaluation, so that the president's evaluation would also be completed. By this current board in June, and then there would, it would become goal setting at the July retreat. Which, thank you for the feedback, which also means that our June work session. Will probably work towards. Thinking about a lighter. Agenda, and we will have a longer executive session that evening that we will schedule in. So I'll I'll rewrite the president's evaluation piece to. To help to to reflect that. I did also want to point out the. New board member training, which Marge and I have been working on, and which Holly's kind of been our our test, our test run. And I'm I'm really excited about it, and I think it it's going really well so far. And I've realized that the only thing that we probably still need, there are other things, if you have any ideas to add to it, but. We definitely want to get a tour on there. And make sure that our new board members get a tour, because I have a feeling, you know, very soon we'll be able to start doing that again. Any other, any other feedback or comments on these? Please feel free to, yes, Rosie.
We owe you a big debt of gratitude, Lisa, for documenting all of this, the the fact that none of this has been in writing. We owe you a big debt of gratitude, Lisa, for documenting all of this. The, the fact that none of this has been in writing is sort of puzzling. I'm not sure over the last decade why it's never been done, but it hasn't. And the fact that you have done this is just fantastic, and I really applaud you for doing it, and it will serve the board, and especially, given the turnover we're expecting, it will serve new board members so well. So thank you for doing it.
Thanks, Rosie. Melanie kind of got me started on it, and now I'm just geeking out on it a little bit, so. Um, okay, if you do have any suggestions or anything you want to add to the list, let me know. I'm gonna move us on to our next agenda item, which is our board policies. And we've got Michael Blade, our general counsel.
Thank you, Chair Fragola. So, yep, we're back with more board policies. Just one change I wanted to point out, you'll notice that one of the attachments to this particular section has a black line of, of suggested changes. So from now on, I'll be giving you sort of my suggested changes. And it really, it's, if you look at the Board Policy 305 versus OCCA Board Policy 2340, that's where you'll see the biggest change. There's some other insertions that are a little, probably a little less substantive, but I just wanted to point that out. There, there should be a black line every month going forward. So we'll start out with the OCCA Board Policy 2340, which is on agendas. Again, this is, this one didn't really track very well with the, the current LCC policy. The current LCC policy really dealt more with, you know, reviewing board policies and continually, continually approving, improving board education, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas the OCCA policy really dealt with the nuts and bolts of agendas, when, when they have to be submitted, you know, what's in them, that type of thing. So what I tried to do with the, with this, the black line I just referenced, was kind of put the two together, because I do think it's important for the, the, the information that was in the lane policy to be reflected in what ideally will be the new policy. So if you look at that black line of, of Board Policy 2340, which is the OCCA policy, you'll see some of the language from the lane policy has been inserted. So that's, that's the fir-, that's really the one of these, what is it, six? Of these six, I think, that, that, that didn't track very well. Obviously, there's four of them, didn't have a lane policy that, that was comparative, but this was the, really the one where there was some, some work to be done.
Mike, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
When I'm looking at the one that you're referring to as the black line, is the blue? What is the blue? Is that from the OCCA, or is that from the LCC?
No, the, the blue would be insert, insertions, that is, language from the lane policy into the OCCA policy.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah.
Any questions? Angela?
I think it's Chelsea's hand first. I'm happy to go.
Okay, um, go ahead, Chelsea. I, I actually, I was looking at something else, and then I noticed there were hands up, so. Chelsea's is up first.
That's no problem. Thank you. I just have an overarching comment to reiterate the board's desire to see gender neutral language included in all of our board policies. If I'm looking at the correct document, and if I'm not, please point me in the right direction. But if I'm looking at Board Policy 2432, for example, I'm still seeing the his/her pronouns here. So I'd just like to reiterate that it has been previously the board's desire to see gender neutral language throughout all of our policies. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea. And next would be Angela.
Thank you. I, I think I probably have comments on all of the proposed policies, but I'll just comment on the one that we're discussing right now, 2340. The, I think it's the last sentence, "Agendas will be developed by the President in consultation with the Board of Education Chair and Vice Chair." I think, um, the, our 305, we had actually recently amended to add, you know, the board may designate an additional member to the agenda setting group. It had to be recent, because I remember it happening, and I've only been on the board for a hot second. And so I'm wondering if that's something that we could add to this language, or I'm not sure how the language would work. I was just looking back at the board operating procedures, but Lisa kindly wrote out for us. I was wondering if there's an agenda setting committee or something that we could reference like that. And that's, I think that's my only comment on this one. Thank you.
So I do see that when we look at Board Policy 305, it does include that language.
We can include that. That's not a problem.
Okay. Matt?
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, I do see, point of information, I do see that language in the document in front of me. I hope we're, I'm tracking the right document. The Chair, quote, "The Chair and Vice Chair in consultation with the President set the agenda," CBP 320 1.0. "In addition, the board may designate an additional member to the agenda, agenda setting group."
So that is, yeah, that's Board Policy 305, and when Angela is looking at the the mashup that Michael Blade did, that language wasn't included. So I'm hearing that we can add that in.
Yeah, yeah, my apologies. I see that. Okay, great.
No problem.
So I'm hearing two people speak in support of adding that.
Yeah, and my comments, Madam Chair, are on BP 2345 and 2350. I'm happy to, to wait in the queue when we get to those, if we're going one at a time.
Yeah, I think we're gonna go one at a time. But you could leave your hand up. That's good. Um, any other comments on this first one, which is on agendas, agendas or agenda planning? Angela?
I was saying my hand up for the next round.
Okay, all right. So I'll move us on to the next one, then. You want to give us the intro on the next one?
Yeah, the next one is, there, there isn't anything currently in the, in the lanes board policies that's even close to this. So this is this, you know, it's a, it's a legally advised, it's not required. It, and I think it, it just outlines public participation at board, at board meetings. I did, in, now, the original OCCA policy came with a blank. If you'll notice, in the, in the black line, you'll see I filled in one working day. I think they had, I think the, the OCCA had a blank there that, I mean, so that one is just my insertion that could be changed if, if the board chooses. Yeah, so that's, that's the, there, there, you know, it is what it is.
Okay, I've got Angela in the queue, followed by Matt.
Thank you. And so as I read and reread this proposed policy, I, I find myself interpreting it in different ways. And I guess I'm not clear how I should interpret it, which suggests that maybe it needs a little bit more clarity. So when I first read it, I thought that it was saying that in order to have written communication to the board for public comment, that the public would be required to submit it at least one working day prior to the meeting. And now I'm reading it as though maybe that one working day is the guideline. I'm not super clear what the implications of that are. I guess, so my perspective is that I don't want to throw up barriers for the public sort of giving us their thoughts. I also, you know, want to make sure that the administration has a reasonable amount of time to sort of turn things around. So I'm not sure what the balance there is, but this feels like maybe it's putting up a barrier that I'm, I'm not super down with. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Matt?
I couldn't agree with Angela more. Sentence number two of the proposed BP 2345. Sentence number two in paragraph two is wholly unnecessary and overly prescriptive. And it's a roadblock. "Written communication regarding the items on the Board of Education's, Board of Education's agenda should reach the Office of the President no later than one working day prior to the meeting at which the matter concerned is before the Board of Education." If that entire sentence is, is stricken, then, and, and then we, as a board, are saying that we also accept written communication, "And all such written communications shall be dated and signed by the author or shall, and or, and shall contain the residence or business address of the author at the author's organization affiliation." That's okay, but I think we could even take that a step further. We have a whistleblower policy, and yet we don't have a mechanism for someone to provide testimony anonymously. And so I, I would concur with Angela that, 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 A, I agree that elements of this are roadblock, and B, I, I would go a step further and ask for language to be more flexible in receiving our written communications, that they not necessarily shall be dated and signed by the author, and shall contain the residence or business address, but may be dated and signed by the author, and may contain the residence or, or business address. That's, I, I'm not wedded to that one way or another. I'd love to have that debate, but I am wholly opposed to prescribing the written communication, or signing up, or participating in a public setting, that we put the, the, we put artificial timelines attached to, to public participation. We should be removing those barriers and encouraging the public to participate as wholly as possible.
Okay, Marge, I see your hand up, and then I have myself in the queue.
So I hear everything everybody's saying, but it is complicated, because there's different situations. You might be in a situation where you're voting on something really important that night. It really would be beneficial to the public per, the public participant, if they gave you time to read it in advance. So I think using may will help, but we want to encourage people, if they've got something concrete to say that you're voting on tonight, the more time they can give you to read it and digest it, the better. I think that was partly behind why some colleges do that. The mays are fine, but, but I think we want to give board members time to digest what's in front of them.
Thanks, Marge. So I had some of the same concerns about removing barriers that Angela and Matt expressed, making the language more flexible. I, I personally think having someone's residence or business address is a holdover from a day when we didn't have emails. I think it's wholly unnecessary. But I also was confused by this policy, but I'll speak to that more when we get to the next one, because I'm not sure what public participation versus speakers is, and so I'll ask about that in the next one. Michael?
Yeah, I would just point out that the, the sentence that Trustee Keating was talking about, I, I, the way I read that is the word should is super important, I think. It's the key word in that sentence. I, I don't think it's a must. You know, I, if you have a written response, you should have it there in time. And, and I can, you know, there's, there's lots and lots of reasons why. One, I think President Hamilton enumerated. I think the other one is that a lot of times, these, these written communications need some response from, if it's, especially if it's an important issue, some response from the administration. And if we're getting it five minutes before the, the the meeting, then we're, then we're subject to saying, well, we, we don't know, we'll get back to you. I think it'd be a far better discussion item at the meeting if we had a chance to look at it and say, okay, you know, so-and-so said X, well, here, you know, this is our response to, to X. Again, it doesn't say must, it says should. And so I think we would still take the late ones. I just would like to encourage folks who are gonna submit a written response to get in a day ahead of time, so we would have a, a more robust discussion about it.
Hey, Marge, did you have a response? Because I have Mike's. I see Mike has got his hand up. Okay, Mike?
It, it seems to me that we could use some kind of language like written input will be most effectively considered if it were submitted, you know, in advance or something like that. So it's not sort of issued as a command. And to let the person know that it's to their advantage to give the, to, to, to submit it a little bit early.
Good suggestion. Okay, so I'm gonna put this one into the needs work category for now, and move us on to the the next one, 2350, speakers.
I think this one's very similar to, to the one we just talked about. This has to do with, obviously, folks who want to speak at the meeting. We did add in the, you'll see the, the last bullet point, which the reason, we, I had a meeting with, I think it was Dr. Hamilton, and I think Deb might have been there, and maybe Donna, and we were talking about the need for, if, if there're gonna be a, quite a lot, large group of people speaking at a, at a particular board meeting on a subject, giving us time to make sure that we have space. So that's why that last, that last blue insertion was made, so that we can make sure that, you know, when we get back into in-person board meetings, that we do have, we're holding it in the proper location, if there's gonna be, you know, thirty or forty extra people showing up to speak. So that, that's, I can tell you, that's the reason for that one. The other, the other where there was a blank, I inserted fifteen minutes, but that's, you know, that's if, if, in that instance, there'd be five people talking on a single subject, that's something, obviously, I just inserted for your consideration. That could be, you know, you, that could be unlimited or something else besides fifteen minutes.
Angela?
Thank you. I think having a little bit more clarity about our public comment process is something that I've been interested in for a while, so I appreciate this this policy proposal. I have a few concerns, I think, sort of along the lines of concerns I had on the last one. I'm not stoked about the fifteen-minute topic max. Although, in terms of time management, I love it. In terms of board access for the public, I, I don't think that that's really aligned with our sort of philosophy on the subject. We have, on occasion, thought about, discussed, and actually, I think, implemented like a reduction to the individual minute max, and that's not addressed in this policy. So I'd like to see some way that we sort of codify that, just so that the public knows. But if that is if that is a tool in our toolbox, you know, how we would use it, how we would implement it, what, what would happen, and, and sort of how that would go. And I, I appreciate the signing up one day in advance, the reasons for it, but I, I don't like it at all, because I don't think that it's, I think it's appropriate for the reasons that you said, Michael. But I, I think that that presents a barrier that's not necessary for the public, and and we need to sort of make ourselves as available as we can during the public comment sessions. I think those are all the comments I have.
Thank you. I have Matt Keating next.
Thanks, Chair. I am fundamentally opposed to the to, to this potential policy as, as written. Again, it's overly prescriptive. It limits participation. It's an arbitrary time of five minutes, or actually fifteen minutes, just five speakers. It limits, you think, I think back of, of the eight years of service on this board, and how many times we've had someone say they're submitting testimony on behalf of a professor who is, is in the classroom as we speak. But that person would have to be scheduled in order to speak. So, so according to this, non-scheduled substitutes may not speak in place of scheduled speakers unless alternates have been submitted on the original request. Why is there original request? Why can't there just be a sign up at the meeting if we're, if we're appropriately Why can't there just be a sign up at the meeting if we're if we're appropriately advertising when our public meetings are and the public attends the meetings, the public should have the ability to speak at public meetings. And historically, I believe right now there's a 25 minute limit. Historically, if more speakers have signed up than that 25 minute, the board has graciously allowed the space for either an extension of time or to encourage speakers to reduce their comments from three minutes to two minutes in order to get the maximum amount of public participation. This proposed policy does the opposite. It's the antithesis of promoting the maximum amount of public participation. I strongly encourage this policy. Go back to the drawing room. I'm happy to work offline to to make it more palatable.
Okay, I have Mike in the queue.
Thank you, Brett, for showing me where the raise hand feature is. And I think that what we've done in the time that I've been on the board has worked fine. I mean, there have been times when we've had big crowds and a lot of times when there's going to be a large crowd, we get some advanced notice and we're able to relocate if we have to. Even when we haven't relocated, it has worked okay to sign for people to sign up at at the door just prior to the meeting. And I, to me, if if we were having big problems with this, I might see a need for more regulation or more structure. But our practice in the past, as Matt has cited, has been for the board to consider granting more time if the total needs to expand a little bit or to reduce the time per speaker or both. And it just seems to me like that's worked well. I don't see a reason for a change.
Angela, was your hand still up or did you raise it again? I might not have taken it down. So did you have another comment? Okay, thank you. So I I agree. I think this policy has represents a lot of barriers. And I agree with what Mike just said. I think what we've been doing has been working great. If I I've been in my mind thinking 30 minutes on the agenda. But I have heard multiple board members say that you know, our values are that we want to hear from our stakeholders and that when we're presented with many speakers, we we flex to to meet our stakeholders and we might have to reduce the amount of time they flex with us. I also remember that at times we have also demonstrated an awareness about the different abilities to communicate that might be present in our community and that when we do reduce it to two minutes, there there can be an accommodation requested to have the full three minutes. So that is something I also I mean, it can be a practice. We can always do that. I know the chair can can decide to do that. But I feel like this needs a lot of work. I just want to say, and I was really confused by speakers and and Mike, maybe Michael Blade, maybe just clarify for me, is this referring only to public comment? Or is it also referring to the idea that people can sign up to give a presentation to the board?
I think those are one in the same. The only if you sign up to give a presentation to the board, I mean, the board can grant more time, but that's still a public speaker. You've got your you've got your agenda items, which are going to be your discussion slash action item. And you know, you're going to have your presentations from the bargaining units. But anybody else, I think, would be would be a public speaker.
So are so are you saying any member of the public could contact myself or the vice chair and request to give a presentation to the board? That was outside of the public comment time?
Of up to three minutes.
Of up to three minutes. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I was just, I that's not really something that we've done, but I guess I'm thinking too rigidly in terms of how the agenda is is structured. But okay, so I want to also put this one in the needs work section. And we can think about maybe those two together. Let's go ahead and go on. Looking to make sure there's no other hands. Let's go on to decorum.
This one is, again, nothing in the current lane policies regarding decorum. This is a policy that's recommended as good practice. It's not legally advised. It's not legally required. Simply a policy aimed at making sure that the board meeting is run smoothly. I've only been here a year. I don't think this has ever been a problem in my time. I don't know about those of you who have been here longer, but you know, I think we can all look at examples that we've seen in the last few years on YouTube or whatever, where there's been issues with decorum. So that's what this policy is is aimed at, how we deal with those, if those issues did arise.
You got to go to a city council meeting if you want to see some lively meetings.
Exactly.
Any any feedback or comments on this one? Mike?
I'm not too excited about having our public safety officers clear the room unless we're talking about ending the meeting and every and the board leaving. It just seems more confrontational. I suppose there might be a circumstance under which the board absolutely could not stop meeting, but I think it's been fairly standard practice at most public boards I've been at where if the atmosphere in the room is so disruptive that it's impossible to carry on the meeting, that the meeting stops and 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 is gets rescheduled, maybe in a different venue. So that's it's just hard for me to imagine justifying having our public safety people come in and herd people up and hustle them out of the room.
Matt?
I saw Angela's hand come up before mine, Lisa.
Well, the little Zoom thing tells me who puts it up first. So you might have tied and
tie goes to Angela.
Okay, Angela.
Thank you. I have just a sort of mechanical question. If the the sort of removal language talks about if if a person has been requested to curtail their disruptive activity, but they don't, if their behavior continues, then the board may vote to remove them. But if they're being so disruptive that we can't conduct business, how do we vote to remove them? I just, I don't understand like mechanically how that pieces the policy would function.
I think you go to the next paragraph that Mike Easter just was discussing. I mean, I think the the policy would be then you would you would have public safety. If you now, I would say that the the language in that last paragraph, again, it's 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 may, it's not has to or must. So I would point that out. The Board of Education would have the ability to have public safety come in and remove a person or persons who are being disruptive so that the board meeting can could continue. You could also always adjourn, right? I mean, that's always a an option. If it's just, you know, if you don't want to have some public safety come in and clear the room or you don't, you know, go with some other solution, then you can always adjourn the meeting and 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 reschedule. So I just that I think if that person was being so disruptive, you couldn't vote or persons, then your option would be to either have public safety remove them or adjourn.
Okay, Matt, you're up. And then Chelsea.
Thanks. Yeah, in that in that example you gave, Michael, I think it would be appropriate to recess rather than than adjourned because then you wouldn't have to reschedule the the meeting. You could recess for 20 minutes in order to to calm the room. But I hope we would never get there. We because that, you know, this is a functioning board and a respectful audience in the eight years that I've served and you know, it doesn't address the decorum of members. There may be a member who just fundamentally just is digging in and not getting along. And and that's covered in Robert's rules, but I don't know where Roberts addresses the decorum of the audience. And and so I do actually think that that referencing this does empower the board. But it also might be looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. However, I could see the logic in in I can see why you why OCCA is taking this this direction. And so I'm not and I'm not as as I'm not as against this as I as the previous two policies that I've spoke vehemently against. But but I I I see Mike's point about about setting a tone here. And so I want to I want to recognize that and respect that. But but still deliver what you and OCCA are trying to do in regards to empowering the Board of Education, should there be a significant disruption.
Okay, Chelsea and then Rosie.
Thank you. I am, you know, of course, you know, when it comes to looking at this. You know, I of course want there to for there to be the opportunity for everyone in the room, whether it is board members or staff or administration and as well speakers to feel safe. I think that that's incredibly important. And you know, this the second bullet point around, you know, physical violence or threats or physical violence directed towards any person or property. You know, you know, I I agree with that. But the first bullet point, I it just doesn't sit well with me and it's for some of the same reasoning that, you know, my colleagues have brought up concerning other policies as well. And you know, and the other thing to consider too is that the way that this is worded right now, profanity, obscenity, and other disruptive language is somewhat, you know, up to interpretation. And while one, you know, board chair or presiding board might view something is disrupted, another might not. And so I'm concerned with how this could potentially be interpreted by other board chairs and other boards. You know, what is considered disruptive language? What is considered you know, profanity? Because there's some people that think certain words are profanity that others certainly wouldn't. And also too, I mean, I I feel like you know, I as a public servant, you know, I signed up for hearing how people, what people are thinking and how people are feeling. And if someone decides to use, you know, profanity in their public comment that does not, you know, threaten anyone or or property or any things like that. I think that that person has the right to do that and to express how they're feeling. And I don't want to put in place any board policy that, for lack of a better term, is tone policing. So those are my thoughts on that.
Rosie?
Thank you. It strikes me that this this is really more of a operating procedure than it than it is a board policy. My originally I was going to ask Mike, what's the what's the value of having a board policy that describes this? I've actually seen this in operation. There have been times when I was employed by the City of Eugene when council meetings over controversial issues were so disrupted that the mayor would literally invite the members of the council to exit the room. And and so you do, it's valuable to have a conversation like this amongst ourselves to talk about, well, what would we do if that kind of thing happened? And I agree with my colleagues that we've really never gotten into this situation, but it's good to talk about if it ever happened, what would we do? But it would be a simple thing to instead of adopting a policy around a board policy around decorum, to simply write down in the board operating procedures that Lisa's already documented so wonderfully, just kind of what what we would do in case of disruption to a board meeting.
Thanks for that suggestion, Rosie. So I I would say that I I had some similar concerns and I had I did imagine myself trying to stay level headed and call for a vote of the board to have somebody removed. I was like, hmm, unanimous consent, everybody go. Okay, so I I did think this one through in my head, but I I think there were a lot of really, really great suggestions. And I think I I actually like the idea of an operating procedure, but we can we can also talk it over more and see where we get to before we move it to the the next process. We ready to go on to minutes? All right, 2360.
So this is another one that doesn't have a corresponding policy with the current LCC policies. And it this one's pretty self-explanatory as well. It's it's the functioning or it's the, you know, the requirements regarding taking minutes for the meeting.
Angela? And then Matt?
Thank you. I don't have any actual concerns about this policy as it's written. I guess my only question is, is it aligned with our current practice? I feel like our current practice of minutes seems deficient, and I don't really want to introduce significant change unless it's you know, legally advised or something like this.
Donna, is Donna here? Is I I feel like it's in Donna, is this in line with our practice?
I will have to look at it again. 2360.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
You're busy.
Yeah, when I read this the first time, I thought, oh, yeah, this is what we already do. So I think this would this would align really fine with what with what we're already with what I'm already doing.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, thanks. The ORS references handwriting, typewriting, printing, photographing, and every means of recording, including letters, words, pictures, sounds, symbols, combination thereof, all papers, maps, files, facilities, or electronic recordings. And so Vegas. If someone wants to request a recording of our meeting, they they may. But this 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 minutes proposed excuse me, I lost it. Here we go. The proposed board policy 2360 in regards to minutes doesn't reference any of those recordings. Moreover, it says that the minutes shall be public records and available to the public, but it doesn't say how they're available. Are they available in the written form? Are they available via the internet? And if requested, the minutes shall be available in appropriate alternative format. So I don't know what the alternative formats are if I don't know what the primary format is. And so I'm just asking for maybe some clarification because we know how ORS defines public records. But the first paragraph is pretty nebulous about how they're what what's available.
Any other comments? Rosie?
I was just curious about the treatment of minutes from or 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 if minutes are even taken. I'm not I'm not sure what happens in executive session. But my interpretation of this policy would would be that it's committing us to make minutes of all meetings of any kind that the board conducts to treat them as public records. So what what does this have to do with? I mean, how does this treat executive session?
Michael Blade, do you have any response to that?
Yeah, executive session minutes would not be public record. The whole the whole reason for executive session. And that's why members of the journalists can't report on what happens and they can attend but can't report.
Brett, I get that. But the way this is written, it says, you know, meet minutes of all meetings will be public record.
Yeah, executive sessions wouldn't be a meeting of the board in that under that. I mean, we can I mean, we can accept that with language if you'd like. And to, to Matt's point, I would say that meet, that meeting minutes are written. So, I think your, your, the availability would be written minutes. If they're, if they need alternative formats, I guess we, we could provide that if they had a, a reason. In other words, we could give them an, you know, somebody could read it into an audio file or something like that. If they, they needed that.
Thanks. At this, at, at, to Rosie's point, I think that we would need to clarify in that first sentence, for taking minutes of all public meetings of the Board of Education. That would probably satisfy that. And then to, to your point, Michael, I, if that's indeed the case, and that's, that's really not how I saw it. I saw it, as, as I pointed out, there, there are recordings of the entire meeting, which aren't minutes, of course, that's just a recording. That's already available. But if the meeting, if the minutes live on board docs, which is a virtue, which is, which, in which there's a link, one could make an argument that that could be the primary method of delivery. One could also make the argument that not everyone has access to the internet. And so a pulp or paper version may be the, the primary source. My point is that it just doesn't specify what the primary source is and then what the alternative formats are. And, and so I'm just looking for some, some clarity around there. And I hope that my suggestion about Rosie's point is, is, is welcome as well and, and satisfies that need.
Michael, did you want to add anything or shall we?
No, I, I think we can, we can fix that. I mean, I, you know, I, I think Matt's point about public meetings is, is a good one. And I, I think we can draft language to, to fix the, you know, to, to identify what the format of the minutes would be. And then, you know, I think, I like the, the ability for it to be appropriate alternative formats, which gives us flexibility to get them to them in a, in a different format. My guess is the original format in this day and age is going to be, you know, we're going to email them a document. If they don't have internet or something like that, we can mail them. We can print it out and mail them. I mean, that's where the alternative format would come in. But I would think today, you know, again, in 2021, we'd be emailing them a, a Word doc.
All right, let's go.
Okay.
Let's go on to the president succession.
Okay, so this one, we do have a board policy, a lame board policy. And, and other than the general, gender neutral, which I didn't even notice, and I appreciate, I think it was Chelsea, I forget who brought that up, but I do appreciate that. I, I didn't even see that and I apologize for that. The, the, the changes basically were to come up with the very generic succession during a, during a presidential issue, where the president would have to step aside. And so we went with chief, chief academic officer, rather than giving current titles, we went with chief academic officer, chief finance and administration officer and chief human resources officer, that we felt like the generic titles would give us flexibility, should those titles change in the future. So, that's, I, I think, again, this was fairly self-explanatory.
Any comments or questions? All right, that one can go to the consent agenda.
So, just so that I'm clear on what I'm going to be doing over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to work, I, I think I wrote down what everybody said about the various policies. So, I'm going to rework all of them, well, except for maybe the last one. I'm going to rework all of them to try to incorporate as many of the comments. I don't think anybody made, I don't think two people made, you know, contrary comments where I can't include both of them. So, I'm going to try to, try to rework, rework them so that the, the comments were, are included or, or the current language is excluded. And how would, Chair Fragile, would you like me to, to then send it to you? And you can, can sort of disseminate it so that we can decide what would be on the consent agenda for next, for the, for the later board meeting?
At, at this point, I, I'm seeing really only two that I think are going to move to the consent agenda. And we, I think we, I think the process that we've been using, that, that's worked really well is that I'm, I've collaborated with Marge and you. And then at times, when there was a really strong sentiment or a lot of feedback expressed to, by a, a board member, then there was the opportunity for board members to work on some of this. And in the past, so far, it's been, me and Melanie would do that with frequent check-ins. But I see some hands up, so I'm going to go ahead and go to Rosie and then Chelsea. Oops.
I was going to ask you if we could do a quick thumbs up or down if board members, given all of the comments that were not particularly enthusiastic about the decorum piece, if we could just take that information and incorporate it somehow as a section in your operating procedures piece and just deep six it as a policy and not, not adopt a policy. And I, I support that.
Okay.
Holly, what do you think?
Okay, so it's looking like there's a, a lot of support for making board policy 2355, not having that as a policy and creating an operating procedure. And I can work on that. I may check in with one or two people about feedback on that. I, I have everybody's comments written down too. And that's great, thank you. Chelsea?
I just wanted to take a moment to say that I really appreciate this process. And I know that it's taken a lot of work from many people to get us to the point that we're at in terms of being able to, you know, review board policies in a way that feels like we're, we're really moving forward and that there's a good understanding amongst all of us about the process and procedures of how to do it. So, I just wanted to take a moment to say that I, I really appreciate, you know, the last couple of meeting work sessions that we've had with this have been really wonderful. So, thank you to everyone involved in, in getting this up and running.
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of, a lot of, what is the word? Iterations or, but yeah, we're working the kinks out. Holly?
I just want to piggyback on what Chelsea said and just thank everyone for preparing these docs and for board docs. I love board docs. So, just so happy that upon my appointment, reviewing those documents, it has very much helped in this process and laying out the information prior to meetings and just seems very streamlined to me. So, thank you, Madam Chair and everyone else who contributed to bringing in board docs on board. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Okay, so, let, Michael, let's, let's check in just a little bit. I'll check in with Marge and then we'll loop back around with you. But I, I, seems like you have a good sense of where to go and we'll just make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so I, I think that's all of our discussion action items, or all of our discussion items tonight. So, our next board meeting is April 21st. And is there anything for the good of the order? Holly? Okay. Anyone else, anything for the good of the order? All right, well, thank you, everyone. I am going to adjourn this meeting. Have a good evening.